Welcome, I would like to call our regular board meeting for January the 17th at 5:00 PM. I want to start by saying thank you to the judge and welcome Mr. Mike Valdez to our board. Thank you for putting your name in the hat and coming up and sitting on the board with us. There is an agenda in front of us. Are there any recommended changes to this agenda?
No recommended changes.
No recommended changes. Is there a motion to approve this agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Light, all in favor? All right, agenda is approved. The first item on today's agenda is our executive session and is there a motion to go into executive session for land, personnel, and student educational records?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Adams, all in favor? Adams, we are now in the executive session. Is there a motion to come out of the executive session?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Valdez, second by Mr. Cleveland, all in favor? We are out of the executive session. Is there a motion to approve personnel? A, 1 through 11, B, 1 through 23, C, 1 through 61?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland, second by Ms. Light, all in favor? Motion passes. Is there a motion to deny out of district request appeals? Number 508 through 510, and 512 through 515, and 518?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Valdez, second by Mr. Cleveland, all in favor? Motion approved. This evening, I want to welcome everybody to our first meeting in 2023. This evening, we have an awesome guest with us today. We have the North Forsyth MJROTC is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If we could, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for that. The next item on our list is recognitions with Ms. Cindy Solon.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to do the recognitions today. This is always the best part of the meeting. The board members would love for you to come down and shake their hands, so when I call on each recognition area, would you please come this way and then go right across and so every board member and the superintendent can say congratulations? We want to start today with the North High School MCJROTC. If you would, please stand, come this way, and let me tell them what you've done. Please, they have, in recognition of exemplary performance during the past 12 months, the North Forsyth High School Marine Corps Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, the MCJROTC, unit has been selected as a naval honor school. All of those in the audience who are in support of this fine crew, would you please stand? Let's thank them for all their support. I have no doubt without your support, they couldn't have done quite as well. I also want though to add to you that Team Four placed third place and they were awarded $175,000. I think that deserves a round of applause. Team Two placed sixth and they were awarded $132,500. Team Five placed 11th and they were awarded $45,000. Team Three placed 13th and they also were awarded $45,000. And Team Six breaks and this team rose to the occasion. So I want Matt to tell you who they are and tell you what all they did.
Thank you very much. And again, I just have to be very thankful to the board members because this is the most uncomfortable and quiet this group has ever been. A couple of my staff said, "I don't think I've ever been in this room." So again, we want to thank you, first of all, to board members for your texts of support and calls of support through this time. It was very difficult, but with a team like this, it's doable. To Mitch Young as well, being a great sounding board, thank you for those phone calls. Jennifer Coracholo, same way, helping communicate. To principals, Todd Shirley, his team, I've never wanted to not see Steve Hahn's name on my phone again because it was another alarm and another pipe. I would get a phone call from Steve Hahn saying an alarm and as soon as I hung up, Todd Shirley would call and say, "Are you okay?" So yeah, we're moving, you know. About 2:00 in the morning on Christmas Eve, that got a little rough. Just an overview of what took place, we had 15 schools that were affected by some type of water issue. In just Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, to give you a scope of how many hours many of these individuals put in, we spent 36 hours in just Christmas Eve and Christmas Day in schools. And these individuals, and myself, these guys were on vacation. We did not see the families, you know, and now I joke, I didn't get to see mine either, which wasn't terrible. I have four little ones. And we got a new puppy, so trust me, I was out. But again, these individuals never said no, and I want to read their names, especially the technicians, Russell Arnett, Levi Sanford, Todd Carney, Todd Ogletry, Ken Corley, John Dematina, Shane Bearden, Clarence Crenshaw, Cliff Funderberg, and his wife Wendy even came and was running squeegees at schools, and Bo Weldy. Those individuals, once Christmas, a couple of them came during Christmas and Christmas Eve, but the entire week off, they put in almost 50 hours of time from Monday to Friday to get our schools ready to reopen the very next week and ready for our teachers. But my four leads, I have to honestly say, I've never seen work with people like them. Kevin Songer, Kevin, where are you? In the back. He's my lead plumber. He hated these couple days because this fell into his world. Wayne Caston, my lead electrician, he's in the back. Lee Rowe, lead carpenter, and Steve Mooney in the back is my lead HVAC. These individuals were at every single school, every hour. So again, to have that leadership, I can't ask enough, they kept telling me to go home. They're like, "You need to open presents," and I wouldn't go. But again, this type of dedication, I'm glad to have community members see, these are the people that take care of your buildings every day for your kids, and they refused, refused to let a day get delayed with our students and our staff. So again, I think that's a huge testament to that. And ultimately, thank you, Dr. Bearden, you calling me and asking me how my family is goes a long way. And that's leadership that you don't get from a degree or anything else. So again, that is tremendous and we appreciate that. So with that, I also have another announcement that I just found out about today. I want to read this to you. "I'm excited to have Michael Barron, Chair of the Forsyth County Education Foundation, with us this evening. As some of you may be aware, this year, the foundation extended its programming to include staff scholarships. I'm thrilled to announce, found out about it today, for the first time publicly, that foundation is expanding their support to classified staff in our school district. The members of the Forsyth County Education Foundation Governing Board heard about the work that these individuals have done over the winter holiday and voted to approve each member of this team $150 gift card to treat their families to dinner of the time that they lost." "We extremely appreciate the generous $2,250 contribution from the foundation. An additional thank you to recognize our employees of their dedication to keeping our schools safe for students and staff. Thank you to the foundation. And Michael, I believe is at the end of the road. So as you walk through, again, that is a very kind gesture, and it goes beyond to say these guys are greatly appreciated to be here and be recognized. So thank you." It might pay half the bill for that one. But I appreciate you all, and gentlemen, please walk through and shake hands.
As you've just heard, these gentlemen are the glue that hold this school system together. We've got great employees and we appreciate everything that they do and the sacrifices, obviously, that they make. For our last thing tonight, we are going to recognize our employee of the month. Do y'all want to say thank you still, or you want to, okay, you want to stay down here? Okay. All right, could I please have Lori Tyra? You've got a cheering section, Ms. Tyra. You get to come stand right here and let them look at you while I tell all the good things about you. Ms. Tyra is a paraprofessional at South Forsyth High. She started in 2004 at Otwell Middle School, and then she went to South High in 2010 as a special education parapro. We've got, I've got four solid pages here of good things that were written by her, so I'm going to hit a few of the high points.
I started in 1999 at Piedmont.
1999 at Piedmont, okay. I did not have that information. So she's been with us a long time. Lori works tirelessly in our moderate intellectual disabilities class. She takes the time to learn their disabilities and adjust her instruction to fit their individual needs. Ms. T, evidently they affectionately call you Ms. T. Ms. T is a positive force for the specially challenged kids in our class. She treats them with respect, love, and the care that they deserve. Ms. Tyra handles the day-to-day upsets with grace. Ms. T is the epitome of selflessness. I got to watch her constantly, love on, and show up for her students every day. Getting to learn from her was such a privilege and helped push me to find my passion in education. Now, I am a junior, in my junior year in college, pursuing a degree in special ed. So your reach is far and wide, Ms. T. She is not the kind of person to just sit back in the back of the classroom and wait for the lead teacher to give her direction. She steps up and cares and supports the students. She naturally thinks outside the box at how to respond to what's going on with the students at the moment, knowing flexibility is necessary. Lori Tyler, Tyra, has a heart for children that is unparalleled. She has never-ending patience, a kind demeanor, and a purpose-driven work ethic. Have I got more? Ms. T, as we call her, loves her kids. Above all else, she leads in her area with this professional quality. She guides them in the moment of struggling circumstances, but praises them when they appropriately behave, work, and most importantly, show learning. The relation she had with our daughter and with us as parents exceeded our expectations and gave us the security and comfort that only a parent can recognize. Congratulations. For those of you supporting or standing, finish your applause because I know you love Gemma Nix is our proud sponsor of the Spotlight of the Month, so we appreciate Gemma Nix. Next is our superior spotlight, Settles Bridge Elementary School, All Pro Dads, Sarah Von Esch, principal.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you all about the All Pro Dads organization at Settles Bridge. So in light of our safe, connected, and thriving initiatives within our district, I wanted to share how we create that environment at Settles so that we have students and families that are connected so that their children can learn. I have these two wonderful gentlemen with me, Derek Winters and Zachary Vale. They are the fathers, who are also the leaders of our All Pro Dads organization, and they're going to share a bit more about that organization with you. But first, I wanted to share some information from the All Pro Dads website. So really, why, why do we have this program at Settles Bridge? Well, we know that if families are connected with our school and engaged in learning with their children, students have better grades, more consistent attendance, fewer behavior issues, and increased ability to learn. Every family wants that for your child. Every leader in a school wants that for our students. So what better way to pair those two pieces together than to have an organization that has fathers take a large part, or a father figure, take a large role in the learning of their children at Settles Bridge? So, Mr. Winters?
Yeah, so I wanted to give you a quick, little short history lesson. All Pro Dad is an organization that was started by Tony Dungy back in the late 90s. He was the head coach of the Tampa Bay Buccaneers at the time, and he believed that a strong father is something that is very important in kids' lives, and that he had witnessed over the course of time that he thought that dads were getting so busy that they weren't filling that role as much as they could. And so he decided that he wanted to reach out using his influence in the community and bring kids in and fathers in and try to kind of reconnect at a personal level. And so he started encouraging dads all across Tampa area to come to the Bucks facility, and they had their very first All Pro Dad meeting. And it's something that he wanted to teach the dads that, you know, it just takes a little bit of intentional time of connection with their kids to create this, this bond. And the amount of influence that they can have in a kid's life is amazing if they just take the time to do it. And so they started the program there. It's kind of grown organically over time, and it's spread to thousands of chapters now across, across the country, including the one that we have at Settles Bridge. And we, we have watched it grow in our, at our school, and it's, it's been amazing to see. We have a little video.
The latest video game, a new smartphone, not at all. What they really want is more time with you and your children. Time equals love. At All Pro Dad, we give you the one-on-one time you need to build your relationship with your child and the tools to become the best father you can be. Maybe you had a dad or role model to lead you, to inspire you, to be there for you as you were growing up. Maybe you didn't. Either way, we're here to help show the way forward. It starts with bringing your child to school, watching them play, and then they're going to activities, build memories, and learn. And best of all, your child will get what they want most, your time and your love. Tens of thousands of fathers and their children from across the nation are benefiting from involvement with a local All Pro Dad chapter. We hope you'll join us at an existing chapter or start one of your own. It just might change your family forever.
And it's the involvement that have a pride moment where a father will stand up and share moments for their children, why they are proud of them, things that they've done, some character traits, maybe some tough activities, some tough discussions they've had. You know, we're, they're elementary school kids, and they are today's society, they're, they're dealing with some difficult situations and really drawing out those opportunities. This is a moment where kids light up. Physically, we've seen where they, they're fidgeting around and then all of a sudden, they'll just light up with the biggest smile on their face when their dad stands up and tells a room full of other dads and kids how proud of them that they are. So from that, then we go into the, the character building trait. They, they mentioned the video, leadership integrity, this month was loyalty. And then there's typically a video, this month was Frozen. So many of the kids can totally relate to Frozen and the act of loyalty that, that Anna did for her sister, Elsa, I don't know if you guys are familiar with it, but take a look. May have heard of it. Couple billion dollars, I think it made. But from that, we then break into meaningful discussion with our, with our kids. So we have a purposeful discussion with our kids where we're able to hit on those topics, asking questions like, "When is it tough to be loyal?" You know, "When, when do you have a struggle, when do you struggle with that?" You know, for, for us, it was, "They're sisters. She's like, "It's tough sometimes, you know, I want to be loyal." So those are things that we, conversations that we can start and have throughout those moments and opportunity to connect. We also throw prizes in there, which at the very end, every kid loves. And then, and I think really what, what is so important for us is the involvement and engagement that we've had with the PTO. They're 100% supporting us, they sponsor us. Our breakfasts, in the past, they were dad-driven, so dads would go in, they'd get it. Now we're sponsored by our PTO. We also have, have had additional sponsors throughout the year that just other companies have come in, they'll be able to present and share their ideas and, and provide breakfast. So really, I, that's kind of the framework of it. And then now recently, we're now pushing out a take-it-home opportunity. So All Pro Dads, they have the, provide the curriculum, and they also have a take-it-home area where we're pushing it out to the parents, where they can continue that discussion and the connection over when they get home. So what ADP, this is a quote from one of our alum, you know, ADP, All Pro Dads. Nine years of doing All Pro Dads, I've run into dads at events, football games, other events, and they'll, they'll bring back the moments of All Pro Dads. Gosh, those were special moments. And this is one dad here that really thought it was exceptional. "All Pro Dad's provided me a very thought-out and thought-out framework to grow my relationship with my daughters. It is my belief that the intentionality of the conversation topics and the opportunities through to publicly express why I was proud of them has a lot to do with a strong bond I have with them today. I'm extremely grateful that Settles Bridge has APD and that we were able to be a part of the program." And it was Gary Chichester, who's a proud father of, of, of his two daughters. And, you know, where we started, so the, the years prior to this, we were meeting in a media center, a room that was probably able to really truly get about 30 people, and that wasn't even comfortable. And then that was the max, and that was probably four or five years ago. Recently, with the growth and promotion and engagement with our PTO, we've been able to go as high as 200 plus, 250. And recently, we, you know, we tried to stabilize for, for safety reasons, tried to get in right at a wheelhouse of 125, 150. So why, why have I done it? It's because it's that moment to intentionally connect with my, my daughters, to look them in the eye and tell them I'm proud of them. And having a high schooler realizing that that time is limited, I want to make the most of that, that moment, and really truly share with them how much I cherish them. Yeah, I mean, everything Zach said is stuff I want to echo. I mean, it's been an amazing years now, had a, I have a sixth grader and a fourth grader that's, that's currently at Settles Bridge, and to watch it grow from, we used to get 20 dads. And the feedback loop that we've created with the PTO now has been amazing because you now see fathers that didn't even know what the PTO was. And to actually have some dads go in front of them and be able to communicate to them what the PTO is and to make them realize like that they're sponsoring the, the event that you're at, and this is what they do. And we've seen PTO membership driven up from the whole thing. We've seen just a complete, a, a nice engagement feedback loop that's been created by the whole thing. And not to mention the, the increased relationship with the kids. I mean, that my kids, once
figures are able to walk their student down to class. So as a leader, we need to see adults in our building, our talking about. It really helps build that connection space so that parents, both mothers and fathers, or father figures, or mother figures, or the people who are involved in these children's lives and invested in their lives, know, "Who is taking care of my child when they're at school? What is Settles Bridge doing to support my child's growth?" It's allowing that connection to happen so that when I see these parents walking down the hallway, I can say, "Hey, Mr. Vale, how are you? You know, I saw your kiddos in class and this is what was happening." Or, "Mr. Winters, let me let you know what's happening with Christian in class right now." It's building those connections so that we are able to facilitate growth in the children and help our parents see why coming to school and being invested in their child's education makes a difference for them and for us. I know these gentlemen have talked about it I know these gentlemen have talked about it and I don't want to belabor the point, but to see a child's face light up when their parent says, I am proud of you because you persevered. You've been working really hard on a reading goal and you've done it. Or you've been working with your siblings and I know it's hard because they drive you crazy, but you haven't gotten frustrated. And to be seen, that's what kids want. That's what everyone wants. You want to be seen, you want to be heard, you want to know that you have a place where you belong. And I'm proud to say that the partnership that we have with All Pro Dad continues to build that at Settles. So we don't want to take any more of your time. Um, as these gentlemen said, we meet once a month. You're all welcome to attend. I know Mr. Valdez is coming next month. So we welcome you and um, I'll leave you with Brene Brown's quote. Connection is the energy that is created when people feel seen, heard, and valued. That's exactly what's happening at Settles. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. It's uh, just one of many ways that we're trying to get more people involved and parents back into the school. So thank you very much for that.
Yeah, I think they figured out that three-legged stool theory and two legs being the student and us aren't going to cut it. You're the third leg, so I appreciate y'all.
So the, this recognition period is pretty awesome to start 2023. We started with awesome students, awesome staff, and then awesome parents. So thank you very much for that. We are going to take a short recess to let everybody leave before we start our meeting, if you wish. All right, we're ready to continue our meeting. There is a consent agenda in front of you. Has everybody had the opportunity to review this agenda? And are there any questions? No? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Ms. Light, I'm sorry, by Ms. Adams? Second by Ms. Light, all in favor? The motion passes. I think the next item is presentation with our financial report with Larry Hamel.
Good evening.
Evening.
Today, we're going to discuss the December 2022 financial statements. Typically, this time of year, we're consider ourselves about halfway through the school year on terms of financials. We always keep in mind in goal three of how we spend money and collect it. So for December, we opened the year with, excuse me, opened the month with $281 million and we ended the month with 260. Just a couple of things to point out. If you look down here under payroll, you notice it's 27 million. It's a little bit higher this month because we had our Christmas uh, supplement money in this month that was approved by the board to spend. On the revenue side, we collected $32 million mid-month. We're at 421 million year-to-date. Just a couple of things to point out. We're at 70.92% collections. This time last year, it was 70.27. So we're a little bit ahead of schedule where we were last year. Also want to point out that we're 97% already collected on Avalarm, um, .03. We're at 97.15, so we're on schedule with that as well. So it all looks like the revenue's coming in pretty well. On the expense side, month-to-date, we spent about 53.9 million. We spent 288 million year-to-date. Um, available budget's a little bit over 300 million. We're at 48.97%. This time last year, we're at 49%, so we're spending at the same rate we were last year. Debt service cash analysis. So um, for the debt service account, you notice that we transfer the money out of debt service into the debt service LGIP account. The reason we did that was in the past, we weren't getting a lot of rate return on the LGIP. It was really low, .25. And we're getting about that much from the bank, but now the LGIP has gone up faster in terms of how much percentage they gave us. We decided to go ahead and open LGIP account to maximize the amount of money we can collect interest for our debt service. Also, that helps offset a little bit about the one mil uh, drop we had back last year. The other thing we did was the SPOSS 5 account, we're maxing out that and also SPOSS 6 as much as we can to get as much interest income for those accounts as well. Last year, this time, we had about $140 million in those accounts. Special revenue. We have spent uh, month-to-date about $956,000, 9.7 uh, year-to-date total. One thing I do want to point out, if you look at line, function line 4,000 facilities, the $3.9 million, that is CARE Act 3 money and that's the money we decided to spend on ERUs that you gave us permission to spend uh, last year. So those last two elementary schools that didn't have ERUs now have ERUs in them. Capital projects and school food service analysis. Um, capital projects, right now, we got about $27 million sitting in the bank. Uh, this time last year, we're 36. As you know, as we're quickly pushing down the capital projects down to zero as we go along. In terms of the 2014 bonds are done and gone, the 2016 bonds are gone. We're down to the last several million dollars in the 2018 bonds. The only two accounts we really have open left was SPOSS 4, SPOSS 5. School nutrition, start off the month with $18 million. They dropped a little bit. You know, as we did build a deficit into this count over the next three years to uh, spin down that fund balance based on the talks we've had with the state of Georgia. Under the investment summary, um, you'll notice that LGIP, we are maxing out the amount of money we can get into our LGIP fund for Fund 100. That's the second column over. I do want to point out how much interest that brought in last month. That's $700,000. So our goal is to bring in several million dollars over the next several months as we maximize that amount of money we put in that account. Uh, in total, the only count in here that's new is the Fund 352, which is the last column you can see. That's the $36.9 million. That's the money we're collecting in SPOSS 6. Right now, we got seven months of collections and we're up $6 million ahead of schedule on collections for SPOSS 6 at this time. In total, we have about $362 million in uh, in investments. This time last year, we had 246 million. The SPOSS 6 collections, as you can see, $39.5 million. Previous year was about 36.6, so we're ahead of schedule there. You can see the changes from the previous year added up. If you take all those changes, it's averaging about 8% collections above last year. So we're 8% ahead of where we were record numbers the previous year in SPOSS 5. Your cash receipts and disbursements, uh, here's all your elementary schools. The receipts and disbursements are normal for this time of the year. Also, for the middle and high schools, the receipts and disbursements look normal for this time of the year as well. On the total, we've got about $13 million sitting in the high school, excuse me, sitting in the schools. Um, and elementary makes up about 36% of that balance, high school 46, and middle 18. Any questions on the December financial statements?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Hamel. The next item on our agenda is the draft revised policy BCBI, public participation in board meetings with Jennifer Crotchelo.
Good evening.
Hello.
Um, as you're aware, public participation is one of the very numerous communication tools that we use to communicate and engage with our public. And so what I have before you is a revision to our current policy. It will be placed on the website for public feedback for the next 30 days and then we will come back to you in February. Do you have any questions about the proposed policy?
When will it be posted?
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. And it was going to be posted where again?
We will post it on the school system website. It will be on Symbly, which is where your board agendas are. And then we also have a district newsletter going out tomorrow and that goes to all parent portals, parent portal subscribers. So that will go to all parents.
Okay. And how do people get feedback?
Um, whenever they go into, whenever they go to the website, click the link, it goes to Symbly and the feedback is sent to Ms. Mayo. And then Ms. Mayo collects the feedback, shares it with the school board and with myself. And then I'll come back to you in February with any recommendations from the public or any changes.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on our list is our action items. The election of the Board of Education Officers for 2023. Is there a motion to approve the following? 2023 Forsyth County School Board of Education Officers and Representatives. Dara Light, Board Chair and Student Attendance Council. Lindsay Adams will be the Board Chair, Vice Chair, sorry, Vice Chair, and will be the Liaison for the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Mr. Tom Cleveland will be with the Youth Drug Council. And uh, Mr. Mike Valdez will be our Legislative Liaison and our Georgia School Board Association Liaison. And myself will continue to chair the Homeless Youth Council. Is there a motion to approve these officers?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cleveland. Second by Ms. Adams, all in favor? Motion passes. Uh, the next item is a points of information. Are there any points of information? All right. I'm gonna go ahead and just allow like a 60-second recess if anybody wants to leave before we start public participation tonight. All right. The uh, next agenda item is our public participation. Tonight, uh, each speaker will be allotted three minutes. We have a indicator light box right here at the podium. Uh, when your time starts, it will be green. When the yellow light flashes, that indicates you have 30 seconds left. And then, I'm sorry, when the red light comes on, you have 30 seconds left. And then when the yellow light flashes, you have 10 seconds left. And then when the red light buzzer comes on, that's when your three minutes are up. All right. The first speaker is Jared Kershaw.
Thank you. I'm Jared Kershaw. Last month, we got to hear some pretty racy passages from books in our school libraries. We may even get to hear more today. Some of these passages were read dramatically, others in a flat clinical tone. Unsurprisingly, there were some appreciative older liberal men in the audience who thought these readings were very sexy and wished that their sex education classes, when they were in school, included content like that. They could imagine themselves as younger, more lustful young boys and how such graphic sexual passages would pique their interest so much more than your standard diagram of fallopian tubes or the vas deferens. Is that the standard we want, though? Should we be indulging the fantasies of horny old liberal men and exposing our children in schools to sexual kink and explicit sexual content? In Japanese, we have a word, skebe, which means pervert or dirty old man. Is it really appropriate to use the dirty old man standard for what books we allow in our school libraries? I don't have anything against dirty old men. Lord knows, I'm sure there are some who think that I'm a dirty old man. But us dirty old men have had time to grow and experience the world and find ourselves on our own terms. The gift of innocence isn't something we can grant to our children, but it is something that we can steal from them. Parents who want to steal the innocence from their own children at early ages are more than welcome to buy them as many pornographic books as they want. If they want to read them bedtime stories about children being raped or engaging in kink rather than the standards like Green Eggs and Ham and the Cat in the Hat, it is within their authority to do so. And they can worry about explaining their actions to Child Protective Services if any abuse complaints are made. Insisting that pornographic books be available to all children of all ages in school libraries is improperly imposing upon the parental prerogatives of those who wish to give their children room and space to grow out of their innocence on their own. To put it bluntly, nobody is advocating banning books. Concerned parents are just asking to add another layer of filtering before they get to our children. There are millions of books that publishers ban by not publishing. There are millions of books that distributors ban by not distributing. There are millions of books that retailers ban by not selling and millions of books that librarians ban by not stocking in libraries. Asking sexually explicit materials to be filtered out of our community school libraries is not a form of oppression or an infringement on any of our constitutional rights. It is simply the acknowledgement that young children are not adults and that the fantasies of dirty old men should not be used to groom our children into precocious sexualization. And so on that note, thank you very much for your time. And again, I'd love to have lunch with anyone who disagrees with me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Danielle Hartsfield.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Hartsfield and for some time I have been following the public discourse about censoring books in Forsyth County Schools. As a professor in the education field and a researcher who has been studying censorship for several years, these discussions are of special interest to me. Over the past year, you have heard many opinions about what kinds of books should not be in our public schools. But tonight, I want to share some facts. Fact one, in these board meetings, you have listened as citizens of our county read what they consider to be obscene passages from books available in our school libraries. Underlying these actions is an assumption, an assumption that young people will become harmed or depraved by reading books with sexual content. In the years that I have studied books containing what scholar Carrie Robinson terms difficult knowledge and in the years that I have written and published about this topic myself, I have never encountered any empirical evidence collected in a scientifically sound manner suggesting, suggesting children are harmed by reading books about sex or sexual orientations or gender identities. The assumption is simply not true. In fact, one study published in 2014 suggested a positive correlation between reading banned books and pro-social behavior. In other words, children are not corrupted by the books they read. Fact two, young people are capable of choosing the books that are right for them. They put down books they are not yet ready to read. I remember doing this as a child and you probably remember too. Eliza Druseng, a luminary in the field of school librarianship, observed that when adults restrict the books that children want to read, books then become relics on the trash heap. The Forsyth County School Strategic Plan, which was developed with input from citizens of our county, states that increasing student achievement and growth is of critical importance. How are we to improve achievement and literacy if we are not providing access to the books our students want to read? Fact three, a parent or caregiver has the prerogative to decide what his or her or their own child may read. But this same parent or caregiver does not have the knowledge of curriculum, pedagogy, and child development to decide what everyone else's children may read. But do you know who has that knowledge? Educators, our teachers and our school librarians. They are in the best positions to decide which books are most appealing and suitable to students. They are professionals. They train for years. They take countless exams to earn the privilege to teach our children. I would know. I have personally taught dozens of teachers who work in this county. Please trust the judgment of our educators. In closing, I would like to make a request instead of stating another fact. I ask the board to consider a policy mandating that those who complain about a book in a public forum such as this to state the title so caregivers may determine for themselves if the book is appropriate for their own children. So they can get the facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sawyer Kovacs.
My heart always flutters when I come up here. Um, so parents are, parents are judging other parents, teachers, librarians, and you to the harshest degree. And they, you know, they have the ability to teach their kids what they want to. But I find it appalling that they want us to teach their whitewashed, racist, discriminatory history to our kids. Not just, you know, they have the right to their own. But you can't control what a kid, you know, becomes. You may wish for a conservative or a straight person, but no matter what you do, they may grow up to be a gay liberal. If this were, so what we're doing is removing information and making it harder for those seeking answers to find the help they need. If this were really about porn and protecting our kids from it, they should sue Rule 34, Pornhub, and other XXX websites that give free, easy access to all of the porn. They're also suing you. And it, it's because you told them to be quiet when they were breaking rules. And they call it silencing their freedoms when they're actively trying to silence everyone's freedoms of speech. This is about progressing education and including true history and ensuring everyone has equal footing in a world that's honestly rigged against them. Not silencing their voices and not making it so when the world wrongs them, they just suck it up and deal with it. I'm thankful for you guys who serve on the school board because you've worked with the teachers, something many school boards don't do. Our teachers have spent decades earning degrees so that they can teach our students to be successful. These past few years have been hard and I know there are things that could be better, uh, like raising teacher pay a little bit to match the costs in the area. But what we have here is good. I mean, we don't see teachers coming in and giving resignation speeches. That's happening all over the country. So what we have is good. This is far from over and I don't know what the future holds, but you guys keep fighting that good fight. I know there are enemies that just hate you, but you also have friends and families who rely on what you do and the community needs you. So thank you for your time and service.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is James Liming.
Hello again, members of the Board. My name is James Liming. I am a senior now at Denmark High School, and I'm sure you're about as thrilled as I am that I feel the need to be speaking up here again. I graduate in May, which is in four months. One hundred and twenty-four days until I get to leave high school and make a life of my own, and I should be excited. I should be elated that in one hundred and twenty-four days, I get to go to a school of my choice and study something that I am passionate about. But instead of the euphoria that I deserve, all I can feel is dread. This year, I had the honor of being a co-president of my school's Pride Alliance. For the first time, I experienced directly the kind of harassment our club is subjected to. From anonymous accounts jamming our main communication server to groups upon groups of kids mobbing our table at Denmark's Club Expo, it's incessant and demeaning. I'm sure, as I'm sure you can guess, I have never had a problem standing up for myself in the club. But, as I've said, in one hundred and twenty-four days, that is no longer my job, and it's no longer something I can even do. Members of the Board, your county has made a senior scared to graduate because of the actions that can and will be done when they are no longer in school. When a queer student is harassed, there are two options. They either accept it as a part of high school, or they tell an administrator. If they accept it, the harassment just continues and breaks them down until they can't take it anymore. And if they tell an administrator, they're labeled as a wimp or a snitch, opening the door for further passive aggression. There is no win for the tormented queer students of your schools. Do you know how to curb this behavior in the first place? Stop giving the floor to people who only intend to incite more hate. It sickens me to sit here and listen to people who just come here to spout resentment without any real purpose. Every time a child hears this hate, they absorb it more and more. The more needless hostility the person hears, the more they project onto others. When you platform this hate, you are at fault for the hate your students learn and the hate they cast onto others. Members of the Board, it is your responsibility to fix the issue of queer harassment in your schools before more seniors are unnerved at the thought of graduating or before this harassment kills a student. This is on you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Latricia Jackson.
My name is Latricia Jackson. I wanted to address my comments to our newest board member. If you remember, I don't know if you remember me, we were in a strategic planning committee together. What I know from that meeting is you did not see me. We sat in the same group. You didn't see Latricia Jackson, the mother of Mackay Jackson, who loves sports but school not so much yet. You didn't see the mother of Latricia Jackson, whose daughter, Mila Jackson, very good in school but needs emotional support. You didn't see Latricia Jackson, the grieving mother, whose my children's father had died two months before that meeting. And how I know you didn't see me was because I saw your video at the tea party, where you said you tolerated me, where you said that they want our schools so bad. I am a mother. I moved here, my husband, ex-husband and I moved here to go to Forsyth County schools. Left the cab, came to Forsyth. I am here as an active parent, as Wes. I am school bomb. I help every school my kid goes to. I support them. But what you did, you saw a Democrat. You didn't see Latricia Jackson, a mother, trying to provide the best that she can for her two children. You went to that meeting and you talked bad about me when all we did was work together. I thought we actually did a pretty decent job. We didn't agree on everything, but we did work together. And you heard the concerns of Forsyth County. You heard what the community said. So I hope in your new role, you can follow the strategic plan. There was a lot of time, energy, and effort put into that. You're aware of that. I hope in this role, you will keep that in mind, that every student has the right to be safe, connected, and thrive in our schools. And stop playing politics. I am a Democrat, yes. You are a Republican. But guess what? I want your kids to succeed in Forsyth County schools, just like I want my children to. Just like I want everyone's children to. It doesn't matter the political party. I don't understand why this position is political. You're here to give the best service to our students. Again, to make sure they're safe, that they're connected, and they're thriving. So I hope in this role, that will be your focus, not the outside noise, but what the community has come together and put forth as our strategic plan. I hope you really plan to follow that. I hope all of you plan to follow that. The community came out and they spoke loudly. And I surely hope that you all will hold that in your minds when you make every decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Catherine Nuzetti.
Nuziata.
Nuziata, sorry.
Nunziata.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so I don't like speaking in public. I'm a nervous speaker. I do much better one-on-one, which I get the opportunity to do as a nurse practitioner. I get to sit at kitchen tables every day, and we talk about a lot of things. And I have to say, problems or issues with Forsyth County schools does not come up. It is not a kitchen table issue, okay? But what I wanted to get to you was, per the law, Senate Bill 226, which Governor Kemp signed at our Forsyth County Arts and Learning Center, challenges to literature can come from a parent or guardian, a parent or guardian of a student in our schools. And they can take that concern to the principal. The law Kemp signed puts a protocol in place, and asking the Board of Education to unilaterally ban books or censor books is asking them to break the law. So basically, any people coming up here to read brief pieces from literature are doing it for political theater and for attention, and really, they're embarrassing themselves. I mean, their grand poobah is circling the drain right now, and my hope is that they can settle down a little bit, at least until the next theocrat comes along to stick a lightning rod of hate, division, and bigotry up their butt. With that, I return the floor to the drama queens. Oh, and my mom wanted me to show you my shirt. This is what the real mama bears, the national organization stands for, for love and support of the LGBT community.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lily Blizzard.
My name is Lily Blizzard. I'm an eighth grader at Piney Grub Middle School. I run cross-country track and play flag football. Next year, I will be attending Alliance Academy for Innovation. I'll be taking fire services and plan to study aerospace. My goal is to become a U.S. Air Force fighter pilot. At Alliance, there are no sports. I would like to ask the Board to consider giving students the opportunity to try out for sports at their zone high school. Students should not be forced to choose between furthering their education and pursuing their love for sports. Forsyth Virtual Academy students can try out to play sports at their zone high school. Sports helps students do well in school, and playing a sport can improve your health. Being healthy affects school because if you're out sick, you miss essential classes, which can affect your grades. Plus, childhood obesity has almost tripled since the 1970s. Giving students the opportunity to play sports will help them maintain a physically healthy lifestyle. Sports don't just affect you physically, they can improve your mental health. Stress is a major leading cause of suicide in teens. Sports help relieve stress, especially after spending the day in challenging classes. Alliance students can already take a bus to their zone school and then take another bus to Alliance Academy and return to their zone school at the end of the day for their bus home. As a result, Alliance students already have easy transportation back to their zone school and would be there before practices or conditioning begins. For games or activities that take place during school hours, parents would transport their child to the zone school or place of event. Transportation is therefore not an issue. To conclude, I would be very grateful if you considered allowing Alliance students to have the opportunity to compete in sports at their zone high school, just like Forsyth Virtual Academy students. There should be no difference. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ms. Cindy Martin.
I'm here once again to read to you from a book in our school library that has graphic sex. Currently, the school system does not allow students to access explicit content through the school internet. And you should not, you should also not allow students to access explicit content through the school library. That's just common sense policy. This book is in Alliance, Denmark, and West. Here we go. I start the vibrator underneath the blankets. I let my knees splay open and find my slit with my fingers, the soft hooded nub at its apex. I guide the red rubber ball against it. My back arches, and I hiss at its first wonderful, terrible contact. A jolt of pleasure shoots through me. It almost hurts, the hum, the buzz, the stroke of it, so different from the jet of the warm water that pours from the showerhead, so different from the wet lapping of my boyfriend's tongue. Remembering my boyfriend's tongue pushes me into my first orgasm, the sweet way he pressed it just there, right where I'm holding the rubber tip of the vibrator, that anxious, hopeful lapping of his tongue. And I squeeze my eyes shut and my hips buck up against the vibrator. I can't tell, and I don't care which way is up and which way is down. The next orgasm hits like a tsunami, and I'm overcome, and I'm lost in it. Every part of me vibrates in a way that makes me forget my name, and I don't care. I don't care. I don't care, just as long as this feeling persists. I'm lost in the vibration of my coming, with my legs spread into a butterfly pose. When the crest of it passes, I don't turn off the vibrator, I don't take it away, I shove it more firmly against me. I force myself to come again and again until the pleasure morphs into punishment, until I ache, until I lose count of how many times I've come. This is from our experts. We can do better.
The name of an agluca dean.
The next speaker is Ms. Allison Hare. Good evening.
Um, hello. So, I'm back again as well. Um, anyway, I'd like my time to start right now, please. Exposure to pornography at a young age leads to very poor mental health, sexism, objectification, sexual violence, and other negative outcomes. Among other risks, when children view pornography, read it, or digitally, it predates abusive, misogynist gags that they may come to see as normal. And by the way, I polled very liberal sites for this because I did not want to have to hear that from anybody else. Five Ways Pornography Impacts Children and Teens. It impacts their precious brain. It changes neural pathways. It harms a child's view of sex. How it is seen in a book or on a screen is not how it is in real life. Pornography harms a child's view of people. Pixels or a page can lead to their ability to understand the world as it is. It harms their quality of life. It is a supralormal stimulus. Kids cannot stop watching, cannot stop reading. They lose sleep and time. Aren't we about the kids being in school and doing their best thing? Oh, if they're up reading horrible books, not good for the school. It can also cause them to harm other children. We heard from a young woman last month, and I hope you all remember it, where she spoke about the fact that the sexualization that was going on impacted her being harmed. I don't think, this is not a funny thing. This is not. And by the way, I got plenty to read, but I will take my time to make a comment after what just happened. This is not funny. These are children. And I honestly cannot understand for the life of me why there's one, two, three, four, five, six of you sitting up here, and you don't get it. If parents want to get these books in libraries, go for it. Why in the world are our taxpayer dollars going to feed this insanity? I will tell you one thing. When are you all gonna do something and stand up? When? When? Because let me tell you, the only thing that is necessary for the triumph of evil is for the good of you.
Thank you, Ms. Hare. Our next speaker is Ms. Carrie McLaughlin. Carrie McLaughlin? Going once? All right. That will adjourn our public participation for our meeting tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So good.
By Ms. Light, your very last motion.
Second.
Second by Ms. Adams, all in favor? Tonight's meeting is adjourned.